I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as per our agenda at this time, I would ask Nathan Roche to come to the center here, Mayor Boots, and we will have swearing in of Nathan as a member of the Commune Borough Planning Commission as an alternate at this time.
Hey Nathan, raise your right hand if you have a pen on the Bible and repeat it for me. I do solemnly swear or affirm, I do solemnly swear, that I will obey the Constitution of the United States, that I will obey the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and I will discharge the duties of my office, the duties of my office, I owe it to the Lord.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming this evening.
Yeah, if you don't need me for anything, I am very familiar with this.
Okay, thank you very much for attending this evening.
I'm going to use a lot of it.
All the aiorial things. Thank you.
I feel lonely down there. You can hear it.
And now Nathan, in his position as an alternate, is part of the discussion, which we as the Planning Commission would have. However, the only time that Nathan will be a voting member of this is in order to achieve quorum, which would be four members in attendance. So, but keep you in the loop that you know what's happening, what's coming. And one of the other things under the municipality's planning code is that if you fill in as a voting member, the subject that you would vote on, if that is continued for any reason, you would be the one to continue reviewing or voting on that particular subject. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do I have a motion regarding the minutes in our packet from the May 18 regular Planning Commission meeting? I would note this was also a joint meeting with the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Comprehensive Plan. Do I have a motion regarding those minutes?
Uh huh.
I have a motion from Tiffany. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And that was a net?
Yes.
Any discussion, corrections, hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we have a zoning hearing scheduled. It's been quite a stretch that we have not had any. But moving on to the agenda, we have consideration regarding 332, 336 Locust Street, Mountjoy Holdings LP, and this is a lot add one. This is the consolidation of the two properties of the street here. The one currently holds Home Goodies and the 332 lot was the demolition and the proposed cafe patio seating. And you are Mr. Scherzer.
I am.
I'm sorry. Forgive me. Okay, so before us, what we are considering right now is the combining correction, if I'm wrong here Sharon, the combining of those two lots into one deed. They are currently two separate lots. You have the comments from the Borough Engineer regarding this, and also comments from the Lancaster County Planning Commission for their review. And Mr. Scherzer is here representing Mountjoy Holdings LP.
I just wanted to add, if you look at Derek's letter, he just, his comments are mostly administrative. He's recommending conditional approval. There is a requirement also for lighting plan, and also for setting the setting of lot markers.
Sharon, did you get this straightened out about, we were looking at this one last week, and you felt there should be a lot there for the Borough Secretary?
I emailed Mr. Scherzer's the architect for that day, so he's aware.
All right, Mr. Scherzer, if you care to early give us an idea of what's happening here. We've got a live feed, so it would be nice if you could go to the microphone, and it will let people who are watching know what we're discussing here. We have papers in front of us.
I have it up on display.
Because as you know, this property's been demagnetized over downtown for years. And I guess the Lancaster County.
Redevelopment?
Development already made available, and there were no bids on it. So I think we had a person interconditionally for this purpose. And we just want to add on, we want to create a green space patio area for the cafe. It will be fenced in. I think the original, if you have that enough, there's a six-foot fence.
Yes.
That will go around it.
I have a landscape.
There's a customized bridge theme. Very good. There's a customized bridge theme gate that we're fabricating, which has the Old Homie Bridge theme. Yeah, that's, that would have to be the central point. That would be on the sidewalk. And at this point, it's closed courtyard, so it will only be accessed through the cafe and cafe out. So the hour is seven to two, so it will only be open at that point. So any access in the courtyard will be through the cafe. And except, except for these special events where we would open the front gate and, you know, it was, I'm not sure what that is yet.
Something like a caution, this case weekend.
Exactly. If you open it out, then have access. In light of that, there is, per code, a requirement for a lighting plan. And I'm going to ask tonight for a waiver of that because the cafe will be open from seven to two, which is daylight hours, so there's really no reason for a lighting plan at this point. And then saying down the road, as things materialize and the courtyard gets used for even the bad times, we have to address it then before it's over, if that's correct for us. But at this point, I'd ask for a waiver for that because it will only be open during daylight hours.
Okay, so there will be a similar light on the other side?
Yeah, that's correct. So those are old vintage lights. I went to an M.P. and I tried to get something similar to the old lights, the wrong bridge, as close as I could get, and reconditioned them. So they will be able to, yeah, each post.
Okay, now it's saying it would hold three forty watt bulbs. One standard will hold three forty watt bulbs. Are they an LED or?
At this point, they're not.
They're not.
It's just a, you know, it doesn't bulb or whatever. But, and I, you know, the lighting in that, I haven't even decided, you know, is that one from like dusk till nine P.M.? I'm not sure. I feel it's armed of some sort.
That was the question I had. Are you looking at a dusk to dawn light? Is it more for ambiance as opposed? Because do you feel you will be picking up some lighting from the parking lot, it seems?
So again, I'm not concerned about lighting in the area because it's not going to be after use after indoor, once dark. This is strictly imperative.
And you weren't concerned about lighting for any security purposes?
It's a six-foot high fence. I mean, I think it's pretty secure. I mean, I guess, I'm not concerned about it. I'm not saying it's not possible, but at this point, you know, the fence is showing that's a sharp, it's a security fence. So we're confident that that would be accurate.
Okay, and your landscaping is?
Right, so the two corners, it's a raised bed, it's a building which kind of serves as seating as well. It's a stone, stone raised area. And that's all low profile grasses and there's nothing high there. It's, it's grassed. And then the two trees that are, they're in the middle for parking lot are, what we're hoping doesn't shade out of Mountjoy. Your maple, maple tree.
So at this point, you're looking as far as what that landscape, you're showing there towards the front, is that like a bar?
You're talking about the door?
Ceiling, yeah. What is that?
Oh, I think that might be trash receptacles.
Trash receptacles, okay.
I think, I think we want to put trash in the outside, so we're going to probably have some kind of enclosure for that.
Good move. Good move. I was, we were just, when I was talking to Sharon the other day, we were trying to figure out, you know, if that was like a little bar area with stools there or like, exactly.
Yeah, we're going to build an enclosed area for the trash receptacles.
Okay, and then is that the number of tables in your ceiling?
I mean, we're, we're proposing that, but that, again, I'm not sure if that's discussion. We'd like probably have umbrella tables, and we just kind of put them in there as a possible seating.
Okay, because the fact that you don't have shade there, that would afford you some. To the back there at the alley, is that a access to the alley, a gate, or what? When you farm, that's off.
So that's the, that's the bridge theme gate there's the sidewalk.
Okay.
So it should be drawing your, in your back there, that is, that's the power leading gate that we, we're featured on the Old Homie Bridge.
I was disoriented as to how I was looking. That's, I'm good now. That's Locust Street. Okay. All right.
The landscape plan did go to shade trees, huh?
Yes.
All right.
Honestly, we're excited about it. We want to do this project six months ago.
I know.
Yeah, we're through the process.
But we're starting to book ahead up there.
We're excited about it. Things are good. It's going to be a bright spot for downtown and Locust Street. Now, county vision, like the car show, that weekend, what the city, and that's the reason why that's open.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions? Back end is where your trash cans are. Is there an exit out there that you don't, you can take your trash cans out that way?
Yeah, there are trash cans on Locust Street, so they'll come out through the gates in the front.
Really?
Yep.
Yes, yes, they're trash, it's all on the street every Tuesday.
I was just, I just thought that, in a sense, it's so closed, why would you drag it for the whole thing?
Right, there's no access. Like, that's a secure, it's against existing wall, the fence stuff.
Got it. I didn't know that. That's going to be my question, too. Yeah, I can see that now.
The only question I had was as far as security, whether or not Sharon had that conversation with Jack, just to make sure that, you know, they're not looking past, kind of even though it's back open after hours, you know, at night, whether or not they're looking at some kind of, like, one singular light on the side of the light shining down, just for security. If there's anything that's not needed, I will be with it. If we achieve things, it's something that's necessary for security, then I think if somebody needs to be dressed, let's all be together to exit police station for Locust Street, and there's a long way to park, but just in case.
Nathan, anything?
Maybe my only thoughts were about the security as well, and I was actually thinking a little bit about the fact that there is a functioning shelter, a couple doors out there that you don't want to have an area that's, it's dark, enclosed, but if it's at a 2.6 feet high, I mean, I can't make it over six feet.
It seems like the place is pretty secure.
Same here, yeah.
I have a question. How close is the, is it the bus station? Is that right in front here?
Right side.
Right side, okay. I didn't know this was in front of it, blocking the gate or not.
No, no, it's right beside. Any other questions, comments?
I really like the gate. I have a feeling that you have that call.
Yeah, I just, I like the project. It's where your eyes come to call. It's kind of natural.
If you do decide to do lighting, how do you handle it? Do you guys do it as courtyard stream lights?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to run you for, but if the courtyard is used in the need for, you know, after hours, you know, we, we're actually running the electric underground, what possible we're going to do. At this point, we're, you know, we're not going to execute that.
So you are running electric underground?
Conduit.
Yes.
It's conduit, so if you want to, yes, that's, that's.
Yeah, if you take a walk up there, you'll see the conduit laying over there. Is that going to be bricked over there?
There's pavers.
Pavers.
Yeah, so the entire area, except for the green space, will be pavers.
Pavers, okay. The thing is, if you were to decide to do something like the patio lighting, you don't have a height there. You have a six-foot fence on one side, you know, you'd almost have to put a post or something up to be able to do something like that.
Which, which is, we could do that. Like, we have, the concrete is around the main thing is the electric there.
Right.
So you put a little, you know, a power up, you know, probably. Then, another option is to put lighting on the dirt wall.
Right.
Kind of create lighting, so you have some other options.
I'm excited for this.
I know, yeah. It's just taking it longer. Yeah, I'm excited.
Got to jump through the hoops. Okay, all right. If there are no further questions, do I have a motion regarding the, would it be proper to say the lot add one? And for the, for the combination of the two properties of 332, 336 into one lot? Do I have such a mention?
Conditional.
Conditional. Okay, I have a motion from Tiffany. Do I have a second?
Second. I'll start.
Okay, right. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now, with regard to the engineer's letter and the requirement for a lighting plan to be submitted as per section 190-47, is there a motion to waive that requirement based on the current plan for lighting only on the gate area?
I would make that motion, we waive, we waive the requirement for the lighting plan so long as the chief has reviewed it and given his sign of ownership of additional security light.
Okay, I have a motion from Kelly, and a second from Tiff.
I just have one question. All right. If they want to extend their hours into the evening, can we put a provision in there that we would have to review this in the future, or do we just review this in future when it comes back?
Or that the waiver is conditioned on current hours of nine?
True.
Nine a.m. to two P.M.?
Or just say daylight hours.
Daylight hours. Okay, daylight hours.
If I were to not connect, they change nine to seven three, or, but it's as long as daylight hours.
Daylight hours. Are you okay with that, Kelly?
Okay.
Okay, Tiff, you okay with that? All right, any further comments regarding the motion of the waiver of section 190-47, the lighting plan to stipulate as presented for daylight hours and possible need for security lighting at some point? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. You go out, Mr. Scherzer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for.
See you all there in the conference on that soon.
Thank you for your patience.
And would you contact the chief or you just?
Thank you.
Well, it's continued on the contract. I had the landscaper lined up for the end of March, so he, he actually accommodated my schedule. So, in this one, how this meeting turned out, I'll give him a call tomorrow, and I think it, it kind of timely set, you know, seeing after this, the talk was viewed, so hopefully we'll see something happens soon. It's not that long a project. I mean, it's had 60 days, we should be able to approach.
So your landscaper will be lighting the pavers also?
The fence, pavers, and the, the, the.
I have a question. Are you guys going to be painting the wall?
No.
No. The only thought is possibly a URL.
That's another question I was going to say. On URL would be technical.
Possibly, but we'll see. First, the first thing is to get it.
Get it.
Start with that. Okay, fantastic. You're okay, aren't you, Joe?
Yes.
All right, fantastic.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yes. Okay. We have no demolition applications, action items, man bang up day, we have our little treehouse. We need that for my place. That was busy. That was, that had too many hot slaves. We shouldn't have climbed through and just, yeah, through the ward.
I came into it with claws.
I had them blown off. It's, it's on. There we go. I don't think a whole lot has changed.
No.
So there really aren't any new updates. You can see in the green column, yeah, Avatar for Humanity, I guess that's, you know, that's well underway.
Right.
I can tell you.
So what's happening here, 154, 156?
They just picked up their building permit from us about April, last week.
Okay.
So that demolition will.
So they're moving in the end of June with the demolition?
Yeah, and then we'll see their project back here.
Okay, Sharon, do you want to explain this communication with the Collin Law Group? Do you have a copy?
She has, she put them in the order.
Okay.
So this is, the Collin Group actually can take a look at our ordinance with regard to utilities in the right of way, and see if there's an opportunity for us to recharge a fee, and update our fee schedule, and update our ordinance. There's a price that they indicated of $4,800 on Page Three. So I believe that that price is that low because there are other boroughs and townships that are already communicating with the Collin Law Group. So I think the more interest from other boroughs and townships that are shown, I think then they might be able to, you know, provide a little price for that support.
Sharon, is this, looking into this, and Kelly might be able to jump in here, does this have to do with, like, the companies wanting to put boosting on different?
Bright speed.
Bright speed and stuff like that to try and speed up internet?
Yes.
Cable net? Did we, did the Borough do something, wardens?
We did. It was a small cell wireless facility, wardens, we did. Our own attorney went through and called through our code, made some edits and updates. But this, this would charge a fee.
When was this, when was the, you know?
That was, um.
Just a year ago.
Probably more than six months ago.
I was going to say, like, within the last two or three years. I have a long list.
It hasn't been the last year or so.
Yeah. And what other rights of way would they look at? You know, under your, what additional utilities would you put under your streets? You know, you've got your dance floor sooner there already.
Firewater.
Firewater.
So who's charging the, they're charging fees in home?
So they would, the Borough would be charging fees.
Borough would charge their fee.
And they're doing, and they're doing.
For them to be doing work within our right of way.
And what, what are these people doing?
So they would be looking at our ordinance to go through and then make the changes, to make the corrections, and then make changes to our fee schedule so that we could charge a fee.
Yeah, there's something to fee schedule, right?
No.
And later, there's something to do because of our everything in the most.
Right. And I guess this is, this is occurring more and more, right?
Yeah, because, otherwise, more and more updated, you're going to go through.
Yeah.
You have 27, they're thinking, oh, your holes are under your ground, I'm not sure what's going on. They're hiding one of the other streets or something.
Right. Yeah, this discussion came out of an L.A. M.C. meeting.
This is a little bit off subject of that connected. So all of the satellite issues that you mean, is there any way to get out of this whole thing, or charge to whatever the question is?
Well, didn't you, wasn't it said that, said like, if they're at a rental space, once that renter changes and they remove it, you can't go back? I thought that was something that was changed because that issue came up. I'm sorry, I'm not aware of anything like that. I was pretty certain that that's what it was, you know, one of the changes. I'm not sure, but I just remember that being a big issue, or an ISO for everybody, especially on the main street, and they were okay if it was in the back.
Sure, that's what the ordinance states. It's right, they should be in the back, but.
But if they're on the front, when it changes renter, it comes down and doesn't go back up, I was just, that was something that was.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the companies, you know, they No, I think that, I think that the companies, you know, they put them up, but they don't, they don't.
They don't take them down, you got to take them down, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know what our problem is anymore, but I mean, three or four years ago, you know, our problem with, you know, people were just putting on their front properties, I mean, some, there were some police around to have her, you didn't, they really hang that low on the front street.
And, and this would not be looking at that, this would be looking.
No, no, I realize that, but maybe there would be a company. Something that will help, will happen in the future, that, 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 if there's something like that, it might happen.
I do have a question about the, about this, um, so, I'm asking because I know that Lancaster City had an issue with their poles, does the borough, all of the poles, are they, are they?
No.
So how's, how can the borough charge a fee if they don't own the poles?
That's right, they're, most of your wooden poles are PPL or Century.
That's what I, I mean, I actually got, bought a lot of, a lot of, I did, I did run, and new internet service, and then PPL said, no, you can't use your poles.
Right.
So how's that work with this, if we don't own the poles?
See, I don't know how you can regulate it, like you said, if you don't own the poles to start it.
Right.
And. That's a good question.
Personally, I don't know with, with the solicitor we have now within the borough, I can't believe that we're missing something. So I, I think the reason you had, we had this discussion, is you wanted us to review this, see what we thought about it, and whether we felt to make a recommendation to council to move one in or not to review. And I, I've stated my feelings on it, I, I deal with the solicitor that's in place now, that if there was anything that was going to benefit the borough in this matter, that they wouldn't want. They, they represent numerous municipalities, and if it hasn't happened in Columbia, it probably happened somewhere else, and I know he was brought things like that before to us, just like with the sign ordinance that was just redone. That was because of something he ran into in another municipality. So, leave this up to the board, whether they would recommend to council to pursue this or to not pursue.
Has anyone talked to Derek?
I've talked to him, I think.
He's got a copy.
I think he ever come, come up to us before, like nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, something with this, like, it just seems to sound very familiar.
So they, you were, you were, right.
No, no, this was a discussion that was had at the IMC meeting, and then they're sharing this to say, you know, if there's a pool of other municipalities that are on board, the fee goes down, um, which is what I referenced at, three thousand eight hundred, so it's a twenty percent discount. And they look at drafting cable franchise agreements, you see that, the list of bullets on page three? Cable compliance reviews, drafting wireless facility ordinances, negotiation with cell tower and antenna companies, wireless facility litigation, drafting of right-of-way ordinances, right-of-way management and enforcement, pole attachment, negotiations with cable, and telephone companies, broadband expansion planning and implementation, so that's what it could include.
Kelly, who looked over the last cable franchise agreement? That happened.
That might have been them. And I was using, I thought we used it for something, and you could have, it might be the cable franchise, because we went through that, and it was very lopsided in favor of.
Oh, the cable company, there was nothing they could find that would have benefited the borough to change anything within that franchise agreement that was current.
I think it's worth listening.
Currently in existence.
You know, I.
And I, I remember you were one who really wanted to dig into that.
Yeah, we did, we spent a couple months digging into that, because, like I said, you know, for what they were charging, you know, for the increases they were charging to the people that were using it versus, you know, like for the, for the franchise rights was, you know, we were getting ripped off, you know, so, but like again, when we were going down, maybe you can, like, I think we're probably talking about, I'm pretty sure, yeah, I was a little involved there way back when, I do remember that.
Mary, if you think of the RSL, it is already potentially going to table this and ask the solicitor if he's bold, or tends that they're all ready to cover that for us?
We could. Or we could also, at this, at this point, make a recommendation.
Right, that, they are. I mean, she just said that.
Would you charge them, we're not paying that fee.
No, this would be our fee for the longer. But then, they would all.
Yeah, this is what, for them to do this work, they're, that's what they would charge us, that's what they would charge the borough.
Well, I pay the, I pay the money if we can't actually charge any fees because we don't have the poles.
Right.
Somebody has to ask, think about it.
We don't have the poles.
We don't have the poles.
Well, the negotiation could be anything, it does establish the, 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 the compromise, isn't it?
Has, has, uh.
Yeah, I do remember this negotiation, we tried multiple different, we tried about this, maybe, and no, exactly, this, no, they just, they shot everything, it is refused.
Yeah, that's true.
No, this was, no, the council, this is the, 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 it's very good.
Yeah, the negotiations, yeah. Would you want to have Abby look at this and see what he's, what his, his, his check is on it?
Commentary is complete, you don't care.
So at this point, we'll just table any type of recommendation.
Wait, update next meeting.
Okay. All right. Okay, um, I was going back through some things from council meetings. What's happening with this watershed-based stormwater management plan update? This was a thing that Mark sent to Scott Standish, and it had been doing updates to the Susco River, Cappy Creek watershed stormwater management plan. Do you know what that's about? This was from May.
Well, you can probably ask Derek, he'll be here next month.
Okay, all right. And for those who do not attend council meetings, just to give you an update, um, the borough authorized the purchase of nine point four acres of land located off Ratchet Avenue to relocate the borough public works department. That's the former reduction company out there. They are also looking at selling a portion of the borough farm.
You guys will most likely see that next month.
Twenty-six acres on the east side, if you were at all familiar with that out there, that's the area where the barn was, and it's, I don't. At the, this council meeting, uh, council did authorize forwarding the comp plan to county planning commission and to the banner township and West Standfield for their review and to the school district. Okay, so those were just some updates from Holy Trinity Parkin Lot, you shall see for the July agenda, they submitted as well, their land development plan, just basically, they also submitted to, uh, the county. For the demolition up there, and I, I knew that was an involved process, because anything, anything that the church does, they have to get approval from the diocese before they come forward with anything, so.
So you'll see the Blue Lanes subdivision next month and Holy Trinity Parkin Lot.
Okay, um, in your envelope, you had a card regarding Lancaster County Historic Preservation Trust event in September, and I don't know how many replied, but I will be attending the regional Lancaster County Planning Meeting tomorrow out of West Standfield from noon to two. Okay, does anybody have any other business for the season? Hearing none, I would entertain at seven forty-one, a motion to adjourn, do I have a motion?
Salute.
Kelly. Brad. All in favor?
Aye.